I'm pretty loud, but I don't think I need the microphone. But welcome. Oh, there we are. Okay, great. Welcome to the Ken Sanchez Chapers here at Bernalillo County. I call this March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two zoning meeting of the Bernalillo County Commissioners to order. So we will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Benson, Vice Chair Benson.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Benson. So Deputy County Manager Enrico Grati, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, this is Lucas Tefoya with the Planning Development Services Department. There are no changes or announcements to this, to this agenda.
Thank you very much. I move to approve the October twelfth, twenty twenty-one zoning meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Pescotti. Any, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, unanimous approval of minutes. Madam Clerk, there you are. Please swear in all those that will be giving testimony today.
Everybody that's going to testify, would you stand up, please? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Well, I'll ask and then you say yes. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth, and nothing but the truth, under penalty of perjury? Thank you.
Proceed with the appeals and appeals procedures as follows. The next item on the agenda is appeals. The first appeal is item COA two twenty-two-two-zero-zero-zero-one, BA twenty-two-two-zero-zero-zero-two, ZA twenty-twenty-one-zero-zero-nine-five. This is an appeal based on the evidence in the record. Ordinarily, no new evidence will be accepted before the county commission. However, in, in the event that new evidence or testimony is accepted, the clerk will swear any witnesses who may testify concerning it, which I believe already happened. The order of presentation and time limits as set forth in our rules of procedure are as follows. So we'll have staff presentation for five minutes, appellant presentation for ten minutes, opponent's presentation for fifteen minutes, appellant summation or rebuttal for five minutes, staff closure for two minutes, board discussion and questions, and then take action. Please be aware that the time limits for each side, appellants and opponents, is the total time allowed regardless of the number of persons signed up to speak. So each side will need to decide how to divide the total minutes among their speakers. A, this is a quasi judicial proceeding. The commission is to act as judges of the particular facts concerning the parties before it, applying existing law to the facts. The commission is to base its decision only on the facts presented to it by the parties, and not on any facts supposed by or that may exist outside the proceedings. The commission is to act with impartiality towards each party, applying the law of the facts without favoritism or bias, or the mere desirability of a given result. Clear. Great. Now, I think. A commissioner with a financial or family interest in the outcome of a quasi judicial proceeding should disclose any potential conflict in accordance with these rules, and should, if necessary, recuse himself or herself from the proceedings. The commission, in rendering its decision, should make it a clear statement of what it believes to be the relevant facts, and why those facts led to its decision. Each commissioner shall avoid ex parte communications with parties bringing cases before the commission. However, such communications that occur may be cured by the procedures stated in Rule Number Four. We will begin with staff's presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Nicholas Hamm. I'm Bernalillo County Zoning Administrator. Before I get started, I think it's a good idea to just recognize that I'm possibly the first staff member to stand here, and what an honor that is to be doing that. In my sixteen or so years with the county, this is by a wide margin the nicest facility I've ever been in. So to the commission, Madam Manager and her team, countless other folks that made that possible, a show of gratitude on my part. To today's business. So I'm here to present to you items five A and B. These are appeals of a Board of Adjustment decision, which were appeals of a zoning administration decision. This is a conditional use request for a school. Bernalillo County intends to develop a school facility to serve as the new home for the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy. The Albuquerque Sign Language Academy provides educational services for hearing impaired youth in Bernalillo County and beyond. Bernalillo County zoning code defines a school as a place utilized by an organized body to educate, cultivate, or advance mentally or culturally, for example, private or public schools, academies, universities, daycare centers, instructions in craft line arts, dance, music, and et cetera. The proposed property is located in North Valley area of Bernalillo County between Edith and the railroad, and it's among a diverse array of land uses ranging from single-family dwellings, contractors' yards, commercial uses, office, retail, light industrial, and many others. There were two zoning administration hearings conducted for this request. The first hearing introduced the project, and I took public testimony from folks that were interested in this particular application. I directed the applicant to meet with the community and to seek input regarding their concerns. Second hearing occurred after a public meeting that occurred, and testimony from both the applicant and the members of the public that were concerned confirmed this. And this occurred along with a lengthy public input process. This really spanned years, and it included facilitated public meetings, planning surets, general open houses. And it really was a thorough process to try and get community input and to address the concerns that might have been raised by those that live around this particular facility. Those that wish to testify through my hearing process were not limited in time or scope. They were reminded of the criteria for conditional uses established in the zoning code and the limits of my authority, but they were given ample opportunity to provide testimony and to submit evidence for the record, and this occurred over a period of months. The criteria in the zoning code for approval of a conditional use is as follows. The first is that the property be adequate in size and shape to accommodate the proposed use. The second regarding traffic be that the proposed use not create undue traffic hazards or congestion. And the third is that the use not be in serious conflict with the character of the area, or to have adverse effects on the neighborhood concerned. With regard to the evidence to demonstrate approval, meeting approval criteria for this request, there was a traffic study conducted by a professional engineer. This was reviewed and approved by Bernalillo County Public Works Technical Staff, and the applicant agreed to meet county requirements and to provide necessary infrastructure to provide for safe ingress and egress to the property. The site plan submitted with this application demonstrates that the site is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use, and any required site features that would be required by the county's ordinance. This includes parking and vehicle circulation areas, walls and fences, open spaces and buffers, landscaping, drainage areas. And the buildings proposed with this facility meet both the height and the setback regulations of the underlying zone. With regard to it not being in conflict with the character of the area, as I stated previously, this is a diverse area of the county with a wide array of land uses. Those range, like I said, from residential A-one zoning to light industrial M-one zoning. And this approval was conditioned to address concerns from the community and to seek consistency with the neighborhood and the surrounding properties. These are relevant to both the design of the facility and those that have to do with the construction process that would go along with the development of this property. Conditional uses are uses that are expected to occur in any given zone. They are routine, and myself and other zoning administrators in the county's history has approved a number of schools in county, many in or near residential areas. Conditional use approval does not require neighborhood support. It follows an established hearing process in the code. And this particular request was subject to a very lengthy public input process. In closing, just this particular request was heard with a companion request for a park. There were six, two decisions from my level of hearing process. Six appeals were heard by the Board of Adjustment. All of those were denied. Tonight, we have two appeals of those decisions. That's the end of my presentation. I'll stand for any questions, and my recommendation is to deny the appeals that you have before you tonight. Thanks for your time.
We'll hear one case completely, and then we'll go through and hear the second case completely.
So I believe we have the appellate's presentation now. We're getting to hear the appellate's presentation first, and then we'll call. Okay. Speaker Linda Trujillo and Peggy Norton, yes, both, thank you.
Chair Barboya and Commissioners, my name is Linda Trujillo. I'm representing the El Camino Real Neighborhood Association. Do I give the address as well? Okay. P O Box two-seven-two-eight-eight Albuquerque, New Mexico, eight-seven-one-two-five. There was one finding in the zoning administrators' decision that I was looking at and wondering about. And it states that the county was considering replating Track Two for a school on four-point-eight-six acres. And what surprised me was that the county had already moved forward and applied December first. The decision came out on the seventeenth. So they weren't considering doing the replating. They had already decided to do it. Which brings me to, is this an objective fact finder? Is this government transparency? Is there another plan that's going on, which saddens me? If you don't mind, I have some maps I'd like to use, which will help is, is this on? Oh, I see what you're saying now. All right. Oh, I'm gonna, the area that I want is right there. Oh, oh, zoom. Thank you so much. So this is a page in the master plan for County Parks and Rec, and it discusses the multipurpose satellite recreational facility in the North Valley. And we were so excited to see this because it talks about construction of a satellite recreational center with a lobby, a multipurpose meeting room, classroom space, and a gym. So we were really looking forward to that. And I've highlighted this area as well. And there were two alternatives that were being considered for this property that had been a piece of land on Edith Boulevard, just north of Osuna, which is what I call the Sandia Ranch property. Anyway, the two alternatives were, number one, a satellite center, which would include a pool, fitness center, gym, and a flexible classroom space, or another satellite center for the four-H site with a small office building with classrooms, rest facilities, and it goes on. So those were the two alternatives that were proposed for the Sandia Ranch property. Again, neighbors were excited. Here we go. So at one of the county meetings, the audience was given this particular conceptual site plan. And we were all surprised when the neighbors looked at it, because if you can look, I don't know if this is going to work. There's no community center on this piece of property, the Sandia Ranch property. It's no longer there. In its place is a school. And we were all surprised, and we asked county staff about that, and they said, this was something that had been generated by the school. No, this isn't what we're going to do. And we said, okay. Come twenty twenty, and we were given two preliminary layouts. And both of those, the writing's very small. So one was here for a community facility, and the other choice was to the north. And again, we were excited. We thought this school issue had been laid aside due to bond language and everything. So we were happy about that. So this is, I believe, and I can be corrected, but this is the conceptual plan now for the property. And we're back to no community center. It's gone. There's a school, an outdoor arena, an indoor arena, you know, and everything else. So, you know. We're disappointed. We thought that we were going to get a community center, and that didn't happen. And instead, a school is going in with a question of the limited use about that. So it ends up being underserved area for a community center is what we had originally, and it was approved by the voters. Or we have a school. And, and my only question that I ask is that you look at the facts and not the emotional aspect of this, and, and see which is, is most approved. I'm done with my part, but I know my cohort, Peggy, would like to speak also, so I'll step aside, try not to over.
Thank you. I'm Peggy Norton, President of the North Valley Coalition. We submitted a letter for the December hearing detailing our objections to the proposed project, and we disputed specific findings in our January twenty-fifth letter. The use does not comply with the bond language, the project scope, nor the recommendations of the proposed plan. We included concerns with the size of the school in reference to the neighborhood and access on Broadway beyond emergency access. The legalities of using recreational bond money for a school project are beyond the scope of a neighborhood association. The Z A made this finding of finding number one, the county can develop and lease a charter school on intent with no evidence. Approval of conditional use for a school can be for any school. There is no agreements between the county and ASLA at this point. So if this approval goes through, any school can go in there. And it's the responsibility of the applicant to prove the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the neighborhood or seriously conflict with the character. The proposed school is adjacent to rural residential neighborhoods with modest-sized homes, some with large lots, on the south and the west. The current adjacent properties on all sides of the school site are small buildings and residences. Approximately two commercial buildings of four thousand and two thousand square feet are on the southeast corner. There are historical buildings in the area. So yes, a proposed sixty-two thousand square foot building with a maximum height of twenty-six feet, two stories, does conflict with the character of the area. And the uses have an adverse effect on the neighborhood, such as using amplified sound. Just stating that this use is expected doesn't meet the criteria of what needs to be proven. The application includes access on a quiet rural road, Broadway, not to be confused with Edith, for special events that have not been defined, and this information was not included in the traffic analysis. By not addressing the impacts of traffic on Broadway, the applicant has not proven that traffic congestion or similar hazards will not be created. Finding thirteen acknowledges that this approval does not waive any other requirement or, or any other approval of applicable Bernalillo County ordinances and/or regulations. As a coalition that was formed to implement the North Valley area plan, we are concerned that this project has never been analyzed for compliance with the guiding documents of development for Bernalillo County and the North Valley area, and the North Valley. A primary focus of the North Valley area plan is retaining A-one zoning for agricultural activities and spacious development, especially adjacent to irrigation ditches. Trading a community center for a non-neighborhood school is an adverse effect on the neighborhood. Due to recommendations in the pros plan and the project scope, which reflected desires registered by the community, not providing a satellite community center is a very big adverse effect on the neighborhood. A community center provides positive, healthy benefits for the entire middle North Valley community, both for the physical and social aspects. The conditions of approval on the notice of decision and the site plan presented reflect very little of what I heard people suggest at the November eighteenth public meeting and the many other public meetings. We recommend upholding our appeal and deciding the applicant has not met their burden of proof for a conditional use. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Phyllis Taylor, West Site Southwest, seventeen hundred Central Avenue, Southwest Suite B, Agent for the county. And with me today are Tim Simmons with Civil Transformations, our traffic engineer, Jeremy Shell, our site civil engineer from Respec, and Rafe Martinez from the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy. I want to talk about the purpose of this project. It's to create a regional facility that serves the entire North Valley. And it was, the site was identified in the pros plan in two thousand fourteen and fifteen as a regional agricultural recreation and outdoor education facility for an underserved part of the, the North Valley. The site was acquired in two thousand fifteen and was cleaned up in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. There were meetings begun in February of two thousand nineteen with the community, and the school has been part of the discussion of uses on this site ever since two thousand nineteen. I have a site plan that I can show you that we can talk from. The project is part of a larger, and it's on the computer, is that? Okay, the site is nineteen acres, and the school is part of a larger group of facilities that, that compose of Sandia Ranch property. It includes facilities for the county extensions, a four-H, master gardeners, and some other programming for them. It includes agricultural fields along Edith. It includes a more traditional neighborhood park with playground. The El Camino Real Historic, National Historic Trail passes by the site. There will be an interpretive feature of some sort related to that historic trail. And there are other trails throughout the site that are open to the public. This park area will be open for public access, typical park hours, sunrise to sundown. And there will be a caretaker on-site to control vehicular access in and out of the site after park hours. The site has, the site has met with the community nine times since two thousand nineteen, beginning in two thousand nineteen and continuing to the fall of two thousand twenty-one. This is kind of a timeline, and our artsy staff decided to make COVID a big purple cloud, so that's what that is. So we did have a break from mid-two thousand twenty-one till fall of twenty. So we did have a break from mid 2021 till fall of 20, I mean, sorry, 2020 to fall of 2021 because of that. But we've met a couple of times in the fall with the community. The school is located on approximately five acres. I think one of the appellants gave the site size as 4.86. So it's what's shown in red. And that site is the subject of this appeal. This location was determined based on community input that the community did not want the school right on Edith. So what you see from Edith will be the agricultural fields creating something that's consistent with the character of the valley and buffers the visibility of the school from the community. The property has buffers on all sides. There's railroad tracks on the west. There's drainage on the south and north. And then Edith, an arterial street. The Albuquerque Sign Language Academy, let me back up a minute. The county has partnership relationships with a number of nonprofits located in the county. And the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy has had a relationship with the county since 2009 and is currently occupying a county or leasing land or leasing a building from the county at 620 Lomas Northwest. This property would give the school a chance to expand to a maximum of 200 students. The school has a history of involvement in their surrounding community and they've made a commitment, and this is part of the planned programming at this site, to provide office space, meeting space, and a gymnasium that's open to the public outside of school hours and sort of subject to the same restrictions as any public school would have. I know we have kids playing basketball in school gyms and this would be the same sort of thing for the public. And just thinking about how the plan meets the requirements of a conditional use. The school, as the zoning administrator stated, is a conditional use in A1. It's not unusual to find schools in A1. And the ZA imposed conditions as part of his approval of this piece of our request. And the county has agreed to those conditions. Keep in mind that these facilities have not been designed. And what the site plan shows is their location on the site and their maximum square footage. The school, as part of the overall site plan and on its own, meets the conditional use requirements, including the size is adequate and site is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use. We did submit a sketch plat to be able to show where the property lines would be for a lease if that comes to be. That plat has not moved forward, but the sketch plat has been prepared. And it showed that the site can accommodate the school, the parking, the setbacks, the drainage, the landscaping, everything that would be required under the code. And the site can be developed in a way that undue traffic congestion and hazards will not be created. Tim Simmons will be able to answer questions about that and will speak for a minute when I'm done. But the project's traffic engineer did determine that this site can handle all of the uses proposed. The reason that Broadway is now only emergency access is because the site can be accommodated with one access from Edith. And there was a recommendation that north and southbound turn lanes be provided just to make sure that traffic flows appropriately. And the county has agreed to that improvement. Thirdly, the proposed site will have no adverse impact on the neighborhood or seriously conflict with the character of the area. I think this site plan has tried really hard to celebrate the agricultural character of the North Valley by placing the agricultural fields in the most visible location and in fact, take more than half of the site. Both the school and the extension facilities, extension facilities are not part of this appeal. But both of those will provide space that's available to the public that meets the recreational and meeting and community desires as part of the development of a regional facility. The school's programming works well with other uses on the site. They kind of emphasize outdoor education. And they'll provide space for their partners as well as the community. And Rafe Martinez can talk to you more about that. Their outdoor education and agricultural focus are complementary to the character of the North Valley and the other uses on this site. So I'm going to turn this over for a minute to Tim Simmons first and then Jeremy Shell, and then finally, Rafe Martinez.
Thank you. Tim Simmons.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Timothy Simmons with Civil Transformations Incorporated, address 2929 Coors Boulevard Northwest, Albuquerque 87120. I performed the traffic impact analysis according to the county's requirements. Found that the anticipated traffic that would be generated by the proposed uses would not have any adverse impact on Edith Boulevard and the adjacent roadways. And it did come with a recommendation to provide a left turn lane into the facility as well as pedestrian accommodations that would include sidewalk and/or trail system. So that's about all I have to offer, but we'll be happy to answer any questions at the conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeremy Shell. And then Rafael Martinez.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Jeremy Shell with Respec. I performed the preliminary site civil engineering for the site. And I guess I'll stand for any questions that any of you may have or anybody else as it relates to the site civil. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Rafael.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Rafe Martinez. I'm the executive director and co-founder of the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy. And I'm honored to represent the school community and also over 1,300 signatures that signed a petition in support of this project, many from around that area of Sandia Ranch. So the Albuquerque, and just so you know, I can talk forever about the school. I'm so proud of what the school has done over its 13 years of existence. But what we are, we're a state authorized public charter school that serves deaf, hard of hearing, and hearing kids and special needs kids in a very inclusive environment that leverages American Sign Language as the connective tissue between the hearing and deaf communities. We are a nationally acclaimed, nationally recognized program and really leaders in deaf education. So much so, we're leading a national discussion on deaf ed and special ed reform. And when I say leading, I mean that. We are at the front of the table sparking the conversation about how to do things better. So we're proud of that. As I said, we've been around for 13 years. We've been renewed twice through the Public Ed Commission. So we are proven, we work well with the state. Our accolades include things like being featured by the HuffPost. We were featured by a group out of New York called the Century Foundation, one of four schools that were given the deep dive study as being called different by design and succeeding despite odds that looked like schools would fail, right? And we were doing a good job of that. We are partnered with the likes of Harvard University, Penn State University, University of Minnesota, University of Arizona, and of course, University of New Mexico to reconstruct deaf education curriculum and deaf education training of teachers for the state of New Mexico. And that has translated into a really close working relationship with the Public Ed Department as far as the things that we're doing at this school, translating and being used statewide. So it puts New Mexico at the front end of education, which is a good thing. One thing I will say also is, as Ms. Taylor mentioned, we are deeply dedicated to outdoor education, conservation, and agriculture. Our partnerships include U.S. Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife, Wildlife Federation, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, and of course, the County Extension Office. We build programs through County Extension and hope to, in the hopeful ventuality that this project moves forward, that we'll even strengthen that bond with Bernalillo County, the Extension Office, to provide some really revolutionary programming for students, for all our students. So the one thing I really am proud to speak to is our community partnership mindedness. We, so you have to historically remember that our kids are kids that have been relegated to the edges of comprehensive districts. They're the kids that sit out in the furthest barrack. They're the kids, the kids who walk around in a mask and really not part of the mainstream a lot. It's been the charge of the school and I think the success of the school that we have built program in partnership with 70-plus community members, 70-plus organizations. And we extend that into what we will hopefully do on this piece of property. We want our kids to feel included. They're service minded. They have attributes that can be part of a community. And it's part of our theme that our kids feel like they have a chance of being purposeful citizens, that they can serve the community. And we do already. Working on this piece of property would give us the opportunity to invite the expertise of the neighborhoods, the people from the area, to come and work with our kids appropriately, of course, right? But in a way that really does allow access to the people around us. We're hopeful that everything we say is believed because it's the truth when it comes to our idea of what community partnership is. And so with that, I stand for questions as the hearing proceeds.
Thank you, Mr. Rafael Martinez. Now we will move to the appellate summation for a rebuttal for appeals.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I only had two items or two comments. And I believe Peggy will say something also. I went ahead and looked at the file regarding all of the petition and signatures that were present. And I looked at all of the addresses and the ZIP codes. And there are a lot, you know, like Mr. Martinez said, there were 1,300. And out of those 1,300, there were 10 that had a ZIP code of 87113, which is the Sandia Ranch property. And of those 10, there was one who lived within five miles of the property. So, you know, I just wanted to mention that about the value of the petition. And they were addresses from Colorado, Minnesota, Florida, Texas, California. And I thought, you know, that's interesting that they would be a neighbor not impacted by this particular project. And the other thing that I still am confused about, when I look at this that was originally, oops, no, it's not there. Yes. That was originally, you know, given to us, was that there is no community center there and this was generated by the school. So, you know, when there's discussion about community partnership, you know, it's easy to give lip service, but people need to understand that there's a community center that shouldn't, should have been there originally, that having shared facilities isn't what was originally stated. So that was my only comment.
Thank you so much.
It's hard to tell how long five minutes is. Let's see, I just wanted to say that this is a land use case, not a value judgment of the worth of the school and that there is no guarantee of you are approving for a school, not necessarily this school. That this was a project designed to serve, do the underserved of the North Valley up until 2019. It was based on community input at that time. And as Phyllis mentioned, the county had input and there were many public meetings. But this does not reflect the input that was given by the community. I still find it hard to believe that a school would open itself up to the public in this day and age of problems with that. And if the south entrance is going to be for emergency only and you do go ahead and approve this, that that should be a condition stated that it would not be used for special events, it would only be used for emergency access. Some of the ideas that have come up are pickleball courts here that were part of the community center, things for really the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community. And the site plan that was shown, you could see the large lots on the west side of the property and on the south side of the property. Those are all large, one-house residential lots. On the south side, I think there were some apartments. So this really isn't in character with the area surrounding. I guess that's it. Did you have more, Lynda? We have a whole minute left.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
So I've seen three different maps. What map are we actually really looking at? I want to see the map that we are looking at, the real map. Because there's three different maps I've seen and I've taken notes on. So this map here is the correct map. Okay.
Commissioner Casada, this is the site plan that was reviewed and vetted through the zoning administration process. This is the site plan that the Board of Adjustments saw. This is how the property is intended to be developed through this.
Completely different to the map I just saw. So, okay, thank you.
Great. We'll have one minute for staff closing comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Just to cover some of the things that were brought up during this proceeding, the plat process is, that's routine that an applicant of any color or sort would propose a plat to coincide with proposed property lines. That case is in the sketch plat phase, which is a preliminary approval before it proceeds to what's called final plat. So that's a standard course of review. It's not a final approval by the county. It really is contingent upon the decision of the board this evening. The school, as some other folks have mentioned, is four of the 20 acres of the site. So the subject of tonight's discussion is that only in red that you see on this exhibit. I'm not aware of anything in the record that would indicate there would be amplified sound. Whether or not that's true, the site and its uses would be controlled by the county's noise ordinance, which has a decibel limit that's relevant to the type of zoning on the adjacent parcel. So if it's a residentially zoned parcel next to it, it's subject to the residential limit. Hopefully that makes sense. This is, this project is a realization of the county's adopted planning documents. The property is zone A1. A school happens to be a conditional use of the A1 zone. These are the types of uses that the county anticipates to occur in those specific zoning categories. This is going to sound a little callous, but conditional uses are not a popularity contest. They are based upon specific evidence in the record, weighed against the adopted criteria. And whether or not those can be met is how these rise and fall. So this particular application, it does meet the criteria through my investigation, the Board of Adjustments' investigation of this application. And it's conditioned to be consistent with the character of the area, to limit certain things that were felt to be relevant based upon the uses that were proposed. Some folks were upset about not having community type uses. As you can see on the site plan, there is a multipurpose building. It's part of the park component. I know it's outside of the scope of what we're talking about tonight, but there is, there was a mindful design about inviting the community broadly to use this particular property. And I'll close just with that. This particular application meets the criteria and that is supported by specific evidence in the record. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so on the multipurpose building, that is 25,680 square feet. It's a rather large building. What are the purposes? What's the purpose of the multipurpose? What are the purposes, what's the purpose of the multipurpose building? Is it for a future community center? Have things for the community in that, or it's a multipurpose building that does what?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, I don't think I'm the best person to answer that question, I would just say that the appeal tonight is only subject to the red square, so.
Okay, so, all right.
But on programming, particular use of that, I think that Mr. Barney or someone from.
Well, if it's not relevant to, I mean, it's relevant to some of the arguments on the other side about how they're not getting something that they felt was promised to them. Okay, so, but there is going to be a caretaker's residence that's not in the red line, which I've never seen that at any school. Okay, I don't want to get too deep.
Commissioner Casada, just to say that the other part is, it's a park, and the park definition in the zoning code is really broad, it's really any sort of recreational facility that's designated as such by the county. So, the caretaker would be similar to that that we see at the McKeke Open Space. So, there is precedent in the county's parks and rec system for something like that.
So, I want to be clear on what's in the red with the academy and that being open to the public. As you know, I sat on the Albuquerque Public School Board of Education, that is something that whether we wanted to do that or not, has to happen, those buildings are community buildings, and they have to have access by the community, and we continue to do that at Albuquerque Public Schools. And I think just for the record, every school in Albuquerque Public Schools, whether they're state charter schools or APS-approved charter schools, all are surrounded by homes, most of them by modest homes, and I just don't know how to base a decision based on that argument, because every school is surrounded by homes. My children also went to a school outside of my district, so I know the importance of schools that are even outside of where you live. And I just want to, you know, make that point clear, that if your kids want to go to a specialty school, most likely it is not in their neighborhood. My children went to a performing arts school, we don't have anything like that in the Southwest Mesa where I live, we don't have anything like this, we don't have anything up in the Southwest Mesa, but overcrowded public schools. And I just wanted to make that point, that, you know, there's homes around schools all the ti, at every school, I can't think of a school in my mind that is not surrounded by homes and residential areas. Thank you, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Any other questions, comments from the Commission? Okay, great, we will move to item 5B, to here, we'll proceed with the appeals for item 5B. The second appeal is COA 2022-0002/B A 2022-006/ZA 2021-005. Again, this appeal is based on evidence in the record, ordinarily no new evidence will be accepted before the Commission, however, in the event that new evidence or testimony is accepted, the clerk will swear any witnesses who may testify concerning it. Again, the presentation and time limits as set forth in our rules of procedure are as follows, we will again have staff presentation for five minutes, appellate's presentation 10 minutes, opponent's presentation 15 minutes, appellate summation or rebuttal for five minutes, staff closure, board and discussion again, and then action. Again, please be aware that time limits for each side, appellate's and opponent's, is the total time allowed regardless of the number of persons signed up to speak, so each side will need to decide how to divide the total minutes again. This is a reminder that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, the Commission is to act as judges of the particular facts concerning the parties before it, applying existing law to the facts. The Commission is to base its decision only on the facts presented to it by the parties, and not on any facts supposed by it that may exist outside of these proceedings. The Commission is to act with impartiality toward each party, applying the law of the to the facts without favoritism or bias, or the mere desirability of a given result. Thank you. Again, we will move to a present, staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Again, Nicholas Hamm, zoning administrator for Burnley County. I'm going to start with an apology for being redundant tonight, this is going to be the same presentation you just heard, so bear with me while I run through this. Again, as Madam Chair stated, this is item 5B, an appeal of a Board of Adjustment decision, which is an appeal of a zoning administration decision for a conditional use request for a school. Burnley County intends to develop a school facility for the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy, and the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy provides educational services for hearing impaired youth in Burnley County and beyond. The county zoning code defines the school as a place utilized by an organized body to educate, cultivate, or advance mentally or culturally, for example, private or public schools, academies, universities, daycare centers, instructions, and crafts, fine art, dance, music, et cetera. The subject property is located in the North Valley area of Burnley County between Edith and the railroad, among a diverse array of land uses ranging from single-family dwellings, contractors' yards, commercial, office, retail, and light industrial uses. Two zoning administration hearings were conducted for this request, the first hearing introduced the project and took public testimony. After the first hearing, I directed the applicant to meet with the community, to seek input, and to address some of their concerns. The second hearing occurred after, and that's to say after a lengthy public input process, before it even reached my doorstep, a second hearing was convened, where both the public and the applicant confirmed that there was a public meeting where input was sought and adjustments were made to the site development plan. Those that wish to testify at the zoning administration hearing were not limited in time or scope, they were reminded of the criteria for conditional use approval and the limits of the zoning administrator's authority, but they were provided ample opportunity to submit evidence for the record and to provide testimony over a period of months. The criteria for approval of conditional uses is as follows, that the property be adequate in size and shape to accommodate the proposed use, that the proposed use generate traffic that does not create undue traffic hazards or congestion, and that the proposed use not be in serious conflict with the character of the area or have an adverse effect on the neighborhood concerned. With regard to evidence demonstrating that this could be approved, there was a traffic study conducted by a professional engineer, which was reviewed and accepted by Burnley County Public Works. The applicant agreed to provide access, access infrastructure, and to meet the requirements of Burnley County. Site plan demonstrates that the site is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use, and any required site features required by the ordinance, including parking and vehicle circulation areas, walls and fences, open spaces and buffers, landscaping, drainage areas, and the buildings and structures proposed for this use meet both the height and setback requirements of the underlying zone. The use is not in conflict with the character of the area, as I've stated previously, this is a diverse area with a mixture of land uses ranging from residential A1 to industrial M1 zoning, and the approval was conditioned to address concerns from the community and to seek consistency with the neighborhood concerned. This includes both the design of the facility and the construction process, to make sure that we don't have adverse effects on the neighborhood. Conditional uses are expected to occur in the zone from which they occur, they are routine, and myself and other zoning administrators have approved a number of schools in Burnley County, many in or near residential areas. Conditional approvals do not require neighborhood support, they follow an established hearing process in the code, and this particular request was subject to also a lengthy public input process. This particular application meets the requirements for approval of a conditional use, and it was, again, it was appealed to the Board of Adjustment, that appeal was denied, thereby upholding my previous determination. I recommend that the Board of County Commissioners do the same, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nick Hamm. Now, we will move to appellate's presentation with Speaker Lynda Dietz.
Commissioners, my name is Lynda Dietz, and I'm an appellate in this case, and I live within 200 feet of the subject property. My family has lived in that area for 40 years. We know the character of the neighborhood, and we are, of course, concerned about what is being put on the property, and in this particular case, there are two issues that I have tried to raise at every public hearing that I've been at, and I've tried to raise in my appeals, and I've been ignored on all occasions, on several occasions, I've been told I can't even talk about them. So, today is the first time I feel like at least I have your attention on the two critical issues as far as I'm concerned. And one is the bond language that was passed in 2014, which provided the funds for you to buy the property in 2015. And the second is the due process rights that I and my brother have, and everybody in this room has, in a quasi-judicial proceeding, which is to be heard before a fair and impartial fact-finder. And I've raised this issue since day one, every opportunity I've had, and again, I hear in Mr. Hamm's remarks, he totally ignores that effort completely, he totally ignores the fact that we have been denied at all the nine hearings that we've had, any opportunity to talk about the bond language, and I can't really say for sure whether or not the issue of impartial, yes, it has, I'm sure, the issue of impartiality of you, the fact-finders, has come to our attention. So, in this regard, I have a request for new evidence, that new evidence really only goes to the impartiality of the Commissioners, and it turns out it's all of you, it's not only Debbie O'Malley, but all of you in particular, it's evidence that came to my attention like two weeks ago, and I would like to introduce it, it's a YouTube video of an interview with Brian Cologne, who is the current state auditor, and Rafe Martinez. And the interview is, the portion I want to show you really is limited to less than four minutes, and it talks about his support that he's gotten from all of you over the course of time. And to me, that makes you less than impartial, that makes you quite biased, and in my comments on my appeal, I'll lay that out a little better. But at this point, my request is to introduce that new evidence in support of the fact that there's clear evidence of your prior support for the school, which makes you, in my mind, not impartial fact-finders. So, I ask for a ruling on that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dietz. Thank you so much, Ms. Dietz. I do, I don't, unless other Commissions want to entertain the video, both Commissioner Benson and I are new to that, I have not viewed any or had any conversations with Mr. Rafe Martinez or the school, and I guess if every, yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm not in favor of introducing any new evidence, I believe that we're judging this on what has already been presented. As far as being biased, I am not biased in any way, and whatever that video is, I am unaware of it, and so I don't want to even see it today, because I want to remain unbiased. And I'll be honest, the only person that I've heard from about this case has been you sending emails, and I delete those immediately, because I believe in the process of not having ex parte communication, so I am not biased at all in this. I have not read your emails, nor have I talked to anybody else about this, so I'm not in favor of any new evidence, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the record, I also am not biased, I've never met Mr. Martinez, I'm not sure exactly what you're speaking about, but I believe I can vote here impartially. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, I guess I'm one of the older Commissioners now, and I've never talked into Brian Cologne about this, or Mr. Martinez, about where the location of the school was going to be, or where they were going to put a school. So, I also feel that I'm not biased, that I'm just taking the facts that I'm hearing tonight and trying to do the best that I can to be a community leader, and that's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Commissioner O'Malley, can you proceed fairly on this issue?
I think, is it, son? Madam Chair, I can be fair.
Thank you, I, as well, as I stated, I have not also, so I can, feel like I can move on this without any bias or impartiality.
Can I ask Commissioner O'Malley a question?
No, we are only to be reviewing the evidence in front of us, if you want to make a comment in your remaining time.
Well, I guess I would like her to be honest about her support for the school for 10 years.
Madam Chair, just for the record, we have six minutes and 31 seconds for the appellate, so will that end your testimony? And are we going on to question and answer?
This is not, this is not part of my appeal, I shouldn't be being timed now.
If I may. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, so we have a request from Ms. Dietz for you to consider allowing additional evidence into the record that was not part of the zoning administrator's decision, nor the Board of Adjustment slash County Planning Commission. I think the rules of procedure would allow the Commission to admit new evidence, but it has to be voted upon, so we should probably, you might want to consider having that vote now, and then we can restore the time that Ms. Dietz has used for that request to her presentation time, if that pleases the Commission.
Thank you. Yes, is there any motion to, any motion set forth? Okay, seeing none, we, Ms. Dietz, you can continue with your appellate presentation.
Well, let me get some paperwork in order here before I start.
Madam Chair, for the record, we are going to restart the clock at 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. You have 10 minutes, Ms. Dietz.
I don't know how to work this.
I think if you just move it up a little bit more, thank you, Nick. It's pretty fancy stuff we got here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Lynda Dietz, and I'm the appellate, and I'm the agent for my brother, Robert E. Dietz. I live within 200 feet of the Sandia Ranch at 7718 Edith Boulevard Northeast. There are three things that I can't imagine will happen this afternoon. The first, I can't imagine that any of you are going to publicly deny your personal and long-term support for the school, the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy. You have been in a financial relationship with the school for 12 years, since, I thought it was 2010, but today I hear it was 2009. You all know its executive director, at least by name, but apparently not in person, and he's a likable fellow, I like him. I can't imagine that you will publicly deny your support for him or for the school, I just don't think you will do that. The second thing I can't imagine any of you would do is to raise your hand and say, "I'm willing to breach the mandate of the 2014 bond language in order to put the school on Sandia Ranch property." And I'm willing to do this because it's And I'm willing to do this because it's a good cause. And I have, and I have supported this cause. Apparently, some of you commissioners have known about it for years, others, I don't know how long, Commissioner Barboa, sorry, and Pescari have been on the commission. Thirdly, I can't imagine anybody in this room wants you to do anything illegal. Why are we here today? Because you are going to do it. You are going to allow yourselves to change the use of the property to something the voters did not vote for. There is a process to do this, but you have not chosen to inform yourself on how to do that. Your bond attorney can tell you what that process is, but he's not here today. I hear he's in Denver, and usually is in Denver. So communication with your bond attorney is, it's not easy, I can understand. What did the voters vote for? In 2014, this is the bond language that I voted for, and 110,000.
Madam Chair. And I wanted to get legal opinion. This is about a conditional use. Is this about, what is this? I'm just, I don't understand this. I mean, the, this is supposed to be, the language is about, this is what she, this was appealed by Ms. Dietz, was the conditional use. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Barboa, Commissioner O'Malley, that is correct. This is a zoning hearing based on the criteria in the zoning code that has followed the conditional use process through the zoning administrator, through the Board of Adjustment, and finally, at this body.
Okay, so we need to.
The evaluation criteria we have stressed is really based on the requirements outlined in the zoning code.
Okay.
I don't dispute the fact that this is considered strictly a land use issue. My problem is that you have to obey other laws that are on the books, for example, my due process rights. You also have to obey, whether you want to or not, you have to consider what we voters voted for in 2014. This is an issue that, right now, you don't want me to talk about? I think I have a right to talk about that. I am petitioning you with a cause that says you cannot do what you want to do by just saying, "Oh, it's just a land use matter, and we're only going to look at the zoning code." You have to look at the bond language, the money that bond language raised, and the money that that was used to buy the ranch in 2015. The use of the ranch is controlled by the use that we voted for in 2014, and that use is recreational facilities. It's not, it does not say educational facilities. It says recreational facilities. The bond attorney had a hearing that, it was a Zoom meeting, that Enrico arranged in January of this year. The bond attorney did show up via Zoom, and he said that, he didn't say, "He agreed with my statement that a school is not a recreational facility." Therefore, you as a body, as the commissioners only, because you are in charge of spending our taxpayers' dollars, have to have a public meeting to decide how you're going to change the use from what the bond language says. You have not done that. What you have done is this sidestepping and saying, "Well, the property is zoned A1, and a school is a conditional use on A1, so why can't we change the use via the zoning language?" You cannot do that according to what the bond attorney says. He's not here to verify anything. I invite you back to ask him whether or not I'm telling you the truth. Test my veracity.
Madam Chair, could we have a legal respond to that, please?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley, legal.
I'm not, I don't want to get into the bond language. This is about a conditional use, and I think we need to keep it germane.
Madam Chairman, Robert White, Rubles Rial, Nenaiya, Counsel for Land Use Matters. I am not a bond attorney, but I attended the meeting that Ms. Dietz referred to, and I believe that the issue relating to use of the bond proceeds is a separate issue, separate apart from the land use issue. There are several other issues, or several other procedures before the school can ultimately be built. You know, disposition of the land will have to be dealt with. And the issue of sale of the land and reimbursement of the Parks and Recreation Fund will be necessary as part of the ultimate approval. But that process is not before the commission in this particular proceeding today. Now, Ms. Dietz can spend her time talking about that if she wishes. You can't, you should let her talk about whatever she wants to, but that issue is not before the commission.
Thank you for that clarity. Go ahead and continue, Ms. Linda Dietz.
I'm going to continue to talk about the bond issue because 110,000 people voted for it. It's important to me that you, as the commissioner, address the issue that we voted for, okay? And you can't do this sidestepping, as I've described before, saying, "Oh, this is just a conditional use, and we can do that." I agree, that would only be a zoning issue, which you do have authority to make decisions on. This is an issue of public policy. This is an issue of a mandate of the voters, and I don't think you can blow it off. Okay? I'm going to go on with my prepared remarks, okay? What did the voters vote for? They granted you the right to raise money to buy property for a specific purpose, not to use for any other purpose that you could think of. The voters wanted a recreational facility. That's what the bond language asked, stated. That's why, where does it say right here? You can utilize it for a lot of things, for acquiring property, which you did. It's the last sentence, "for recreational facilities within the county." The problem is, you have two hats. You have one hat sanctioned by the voters to spend money, that they said you could raise, to establish recreational facilities. The second hat is your hat is the zoning authority. That hat allows you to approve specific land uses allowed in A1 zone. That's the nature of Mr. Hamm's endeavor. In this case, the two hats are incompatible, and you have to address that issue. You just can't be blind and say, "We got this problem solved because we have the land use code, and we can do that by ourselves." Again, what I'm asking you now is to ask your bond attorney how you change the use to do what you want to do, which is to put a school on the property, that you cannot do, in my mind, right now, and he said you couldn't. Well, what he said is, the school is a, is not a recreational facility. Ask him if you can merely do it by what you're doing now. He may say, "Yes." You may win outright. I may lose. But I'm here to speak for the 110,000 voters who thought something different. Let the voters and the public gain trust in their elected officials who sorted out a complex problem and choose a path not of deceit, but of straightforward, good and responsible government. Do not choose the path of clever moves. Choose the path of good government. Choose a path that clears the air for voters, for those voters in the past and the voters in the future, that want to rely, that their, the vote that they cast is going to have, the money is going to be spent according to what they intended the money to be spent for. Don't leave it hanging in the air. Please follow the process that can be outlined by your bond attorney if you only ask him. I had two issues. The first one was the significance of the bond language, which I've discussed. The second is the due process rights of mine and my brothers, and that right is protected under the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the State of New Mexico. And that right is to a fair and impartial fact finder in quasi judicial hearings. You have forbidden your staff and any of its agents to speak directly to us, the voters, about the conflict between the bond language usage and the zoning code usage. We have been consistently told in public hearings held by the staff, they will not talk about the bond language. They are only going to talk about the roles you have as the zoning authority. What about hat number one? Only you, the commissioner, wears that hat. Practice open and transparent government. Don't avoid that responsibility. In this particular case, you are the applicant. The Burnley Oak County is the applicant. Mr. Hamm is your servant. The Board of Adjustment are appointed by you, again, as your servants. Under these circumstances, there is no independent fact finder below. You are the judge and the jury of your own application. In effect, you are all the same fact finder, approving your own application. To me, that's patently unfair. That is not an impartial fact finder. That's not an independent fact finder. You get what you want because you control all the steps for approval. In order to cure this, to me, it appears you must withdraw the application, establish an independent fact finder, and have the school, the school is really the party of interest in this case, not the county, and have them apply for the application for whatever use they want on the property. Or in this case, I'm sure it would be a conditional use. However, this process does not cure the violation of the bond language. Again, ask your bond attorney how to do that. Follow his instructions. Again, the voters elected you to follow the law, not to see them with clever tactics to circumvent the intention that they gave you. Again, to date, you have not engaged that process, and I would just say, ask him. In my opinion, supported by your own bond attorney, you need to follow the process, or your approval of the conditional use for the school will breach the mandate given by the 110,000 voters. I think I've stated my position strongly enough, and I hope you consider it seriously. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Linda Dietz. We'll move to opponent's presentation with Phyllis Taylor speaking first. You'll have 15 minutes total for this section.
My graphic appears to have gone away. I'm. I'm going to repeat my presentation from earlier, but I may not have the graphic. I'm going to talk while he fiddles. The purpose of this project is a regional facility that serves the entire North Valley. The site was identified in the PROS plan in 2014 and 15. Regional facility that meets agricultural, recreation, and outdoor education needs and would fill a service gap in the north. Do, I could use, this doesn't come back. Thank you. The site includes, it integrates several components. Only the school is a subject of this appeal. But the site also includes facilities for the county extension for H. Master Gardeners, agricultural fields, a more traditional park with playground, and trails for the public. The El Camino Real National Historic Trail goes by the site, and there will be an interpretive facility or an interpretive kiosk yet to be determined for the El Camino Real Trail. The property will be open typical county park hours from dawn until dusk, and there is an onsite caretaker to manage vehicular access into and out of the site. The county has met with the community nine times from the beginning of 2019 until fall of 2021. There was a break for much of 2020 and 2021 because of restrictions on public meetings. This graphic shows you when the meetings were held, beginning in February 2019 and concluding in the fall of 2021. The school has been, or a school has been part of the discussion of this property since February of 2019. A school would be located on approximately five acres in the southwest corner of the site. This location was determined based on community input that the school should not be right on Edith Boulevard. And you saw in one of the early graphics that was shown by the appellant, one of the appellants, that the school originally was proposed up in the front of the property, but that has been moved. And this is the approved site plan through the ZA process. The county, as I said earlier, supports a lot of nonprofits, including the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy. And the Sign Language Academy is currently located in a county-owned building at 620 Lomas Northwest. This site would allow the school to expand to accommodate a maximum of 200 students. The school has a history of involvement in the surrounding community. It also has programming that's related to the outdoor education and agricultural uses elsewhere on the site. And the site layout was developed to minimize the impact on the surrounding community of the school and other buildings on the property. We looked carefully into development of the plan and in our original application to comply with the conditions of a conditional use. A school is allowed in the A1 zone as a conditional use. They're not unusual in A1. The ZA imposed conditions as part of his approval of the use related to design, and the county has agreed to those. And this, these facilities have not yet been designed, but the site plan shows their location on the site and their maximum square footage. The school, as part of the overall site plan and on its own, meets the criteria of a conditional use request. The site is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use. We have provided a sketch plat to show where the boundaries of this use would be and to show that parking, setbacks, landscaping, circulation, and drainage can all be handled on this site for a school. The site, the site for the proposed use can be developed in such a manner that undue traffic congestion and hazards will not be created. The project team's engineers completed a traffic study that considered the impact of all the uses on the site, including the school, and had incorporated a prior traffic study for the school, as well as the other recreational uses and educational uses on the site. Was that a time? No. I thought, wow, this is taking longer than before. I thought, wow, this is taking longer than before. The, the traffic study that was done for the site by our engineers showed that there would not be an adverse impact. It did recommend left turn lanes northbound and southbound to maintain the flow of traffic, and the county has agreed to provide those improvements. Also, most of the students at this school arrive in buses, so you won't have the vehicular traffic typical of a school and would minimize that impact. The proposed use will have no adverse effect on the neighborhood or seriously conflict with the character of the area. The school location was moved to the back of the site to maintain the agricultural character of the front of the property and maintain and celebrate the agricultural character of this part of the North Valley. There are existing buffers surrounding the site. There's railroad, rail line and railroad right of way on the west, drainage on the north and south, and Edith on the east. And any buildings are set back substantially from the street and are not visible or minimally visible because of that. The school's programming works well with other uses on the site. The school hours are 7:45 to 4:30 Monday through Friday. And the school provides office space that's used by school partners who do things related to the agricultural uses and outdoor education uses on the site. Outdoor education and agricultural programming is complementary to other uses on the site. And the school provide a gym and meeting space that's available to the community, subject to similar restrictions as any public school. Tim Simmons with Civil Transformations will talk about the traffic study briefly. Jeremy Shell with Respect is here to describe the site civil engineering, and Rafe Martinez is here on behalf of the school.
Thank you, Phyllis Taylor. To Tim Simmons.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name again is Tim Simmons, address previously stated. And I did conduct a traffic impact analysis for the proposed uses of the site in, last year in 2021, and found that there would be no expected adverse impacts to the community based on those proposed and projected volumes. And I'd be happy to entertain any technical questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Shell.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, good afternoon again. Jeremy Shell with Respect. I performed the preliminary site civil for the project. My drawings included conceptual grading, drainage, and utility design, which was reviewed and approved by county staff. And so if you guys have any other questions for me or anybody else, then I am happy to answer those questions. Otherwise, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. And finally, Rafe Martinez.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Rafe Martinez. I'm the executive director, the co-founder of the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy, and I represent our vast community of all corners of Burnley County. Our students come from all over the region, and so I would say that our broad community is in full support of this project and are most likely voters for the bond. So the Albuquerque Sign Language Academy is, we're in our 13th year of operation. We're a state authorized public charter school that operates under the auspice of the Public Ed Department. Just as APS is a district, we essentially are our own district, right? So we're able, we are, we are compliant with all regulations set by Public Ed. We are special in that we were created from a very grassroots need to serve deaf, hard of hearing, and special needs within the community without having to send our kids to the state deaf school in San Diego, or to house them in kind of the edges of comprehensive programs, comprehensive district education programs. To be, the need was that our families and our kids deserve to be fully included in schools, but also in the community in which they exist. And we've proven over the 13 years of our operation here at 620 Lomas that we are devoted to being strong partners with anyone who we partner with, right? So the county is a strong partner. We continue to be strong partners because we lease a building and we, we serve. We serve the community as the county serves the community. We have the accolades, the national accolades, as well as the local accolades to say we put our money where our mouth is. We're former Charter School of the Year. This was years back. We've been recognized by the Century Foundation in an article called Different by Design. It featured four schools in the nation. We were one of four schools in the nation to be featured, defying the odds of despite, you know, kind of the challenges facing public education these days. Huff Post, we were part of their, their big tour as well. We invested in outdoor education, outdoor ed, conservation ed, agriculture. We've pinpointed that as a, as a place where our students can, can thrive. And so we have formal partnerships with U.S. Forest Service, Forest and Wildlife, the Wildlife Federation, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. We're talking with Cottonwood Gulch. We work with the County Extension Office for Programming, and we foresee this project moving forward as an opportunity for us to even grow that connection with County Extension just more than it is already. I will say a couple of things differently. I'll say, I'll just say this. We serve students, period. We serve them well. We've been recognized by that. And as far as, we take pride in being a responsible government entity. There is no greater governmental investment in the development of human beings than public education. We believe that. We act that, right? And we have been, we've proven to be just strong stewards of public resource when it comes to serving kids who have traditionally been not well-served. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rafe Martinez. And now we'll hear appellate submission for rebuttal.
Madam Chair, there's 2 minutes 56 seconds on the clock. I don't know if the opponent wants to use the rest of that time.
I'd like to clear something up, and I was consulting with your land use attorney about what's called an offer of proof of the evidence that I asked that you introduce, excuse me, that I asked be introduced into the record. And he says what will happen is that evidence will be included in the record because of my offer of proof. And what, what that means is that when you deny a request for new evidence, I have to have something in the record that shows that that was relevant evidence that you denied. And it, and he said that that's okay, and I'm, I'm willing to go that method. Okay? So the videotape will be included in the record. Okay, I have five minutes. First of all, I, the map of the property, can that be brought back there? It's here. It's not on the screen.
There it is.
Okay, so I can point?
No.
Anyway, it doesn't make any difference. Okay, if you look at the size of the school building, the school building is 62,000 square feet plus. That is the largest building north of Osuna until you get to the Sandia Reservation. It's larger than the Balloon Museum, Balloon Fiesta Museum. That larger building is going to affect the character of our neighborhood. I'm going to leave it there, okay? Because I want to talk to Commissioner O'Malley. And Commissioner O'Malley, I met with you in July of 2019, and I've included this in my affidavit that is in the record. And you could be un, I'm not going to comment on your behavior. I will comment on what you said at that meeting. And you said at that meeting, because we were so shocked that we were going to have a school on the property when we thought we were going to have pretty much of what's already been approved. And you said, this is, I heard you say this. You said, the school is going on the property, get over it.
That is not true, Linda. That is absolutely not true. And you said this in some newsletter that that was true. That is absolutely not true.
Is it true?
I deny that.
Okay. All right. Other people were at the meeting. They were shocked that you said it.
That is not true. I did not say that.
Okay. All I'm saying is, other people heard you say that. They asked you.
What other people said that? That has never come.
Rex Swanda.
No, that is not true. I never said anything like, you think I would say something like, get over it?
All I know is you have refused to meet with us.
No, there's no way.
You have refused to meet with us about the school issue in particular. This is before the conditional use.
Madam Chair, I'm not on trial here.
In essence, you are because you are a biased fact finder.
No, I disagree.
Sorry.
This is getting out of hand. I know you're a trial lawyer, I guess, but I'm not on, but I'm not on, I mean, I'm not on the witness stand. I'm not, Linda.
You are the fact finder in this.
That is correct. That's enough.
I'm going to ask that if you have comments to continue your presentation, please keep it to the uses of what, to the arguments that we are here today around.
My argument was that there are biased fact finders. The clear bias fact finder is Debbie O'Malley. She has been a supporter of the school since 2012. She tried to get it put in the Sawmill District. They would not accept the school. Is that true, Commissioner O'Malley?
You don't have to answer that.
All right, okay. Okay, so she has been a longtime supporter of the school, okay? And to have her not voluntarily say, I'm going to stand behind my support for the school and recuse myself. She's not doing that. I, I, it just, it flabbergasts me.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz. Do you have further presentation regarding the zoning, Ms.?
No, again, you need to consider the bond language in your hat number one. You cannot ignore that. And I've stated a method to do that, and I will stand by that. And I guess I won't say anymore.
Thank you, Linda Dietz. We'll move to the staff closing comments. You have one minute.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, just to remind everyone here, this is an appeal of a conditional use approval by myself and the Board of Adjustment, and the criteria are the three criteria that I stated previously. Through my unbiased fact finding mission, I found that the application met the criteria for approval. The Board of Adjustment found the same in their appellate process. Just to speak briefly to some of the things that were brought up, on the aspect of due process, Ms. Dietz was given unlimited time, and she testified at both of my hearing proceedings about anything that she wanted to speak of. I didn't limit her. I did remind her of the limits of my authority and the criteria, but she was free to speak about anything that she felt was worthy of her time. For me to make a decision on a zoning case based upon bond language would be outside of the scope of the criteria. I would, I would posit that that would be an arbitrary and capricious decision on my part. So the decision that I made was specific to the evidence in the record, weighed against the criteria adopted in the zoning code.
Thank you.
I'd recommend denial of this, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. Now, is there any commissioners that have any comments, questions?
Madam Chair, if, if you would mind. Based on this issue around really what this is a conditional use, in order to build anything or develop anything, you have to have the correct zoning. You have to be allowed to do something. Is that correct?
Madam Chair.
Right, that's the first step, is you have to have the right zoning, even to be, for something to be considered, right? You have to have the right zoning.
That's correct. To be, to apply for a school in Burnley County, you have to.
You have to have the correct zoning, or else, right? An application is like, well, that's meaningless, right? So I would, so my understanding is across from the school, is there an RV park there? That's right across, isn't it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, there's an RV park across the street. There's a contractor's yard in the pocket that the park facility would surround. There's M1 zoning immediately to the west across from the railroad. There, there are a diverse, as I said in my presentation, there's a diverse array of land uses, many much more intense than what is proposed to be constructed on the subject.
Okay. And I just want to mention that I actually have sort of a personal experience with living next to a school. I live next to Garfield. I have a two-acre site in terms of a comparison of conditional use. And there are many large lots in that area. It's a magnet school, so it pools from all over. So schools don't necessarily just pool from an existing neighborhood. They pool from all over the city. So it's a, it's basically a community. So I just want to make sense that, that this conditional use also recognizes that schools pool from a larger community. In other words, it's not, it's not predicated on that it has to serve like a district, right? That's not, a conditional use isn't predicated on that, right? It is really a land use issue, right? Is this a conditional use, and does it meet that criteria? And what you're saying is, we looked at all the criteria, and it meets that criteria. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Any other discussion, questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair Benson.
I just want to clarify any ideas of conflict. We're all members of the community here, and that's why we've been elected to represent. And all of us have gone to school. That doesn't mean that we've got a conflict of interest. My mom was a speech-language pathologist at APS. She taught hearing impaired children. She taught me sign language, me and my sister. I had friends that were deaf. That has no bearing on the zoning decision here, whether it's this school or another school that applied for this. We're looking at the zoning issue here, not which school is coming in. The fact that it is, that it is this school, this is a wonderful school, whether it's here or somebody else, somewhere else, it's still a wonderful school. I just want to clarify that. And then the bond language issue, you might have a valid point, but it doesn't apply here. Just doesn't. If, if a business is not paying its property taxes, that's an issue, but it doesn't come before the. We need to know whether or not, A, a business or institution is in the right place. That's what this meeting is about. Calling somebody's character into question really has no bearing on the zoning decision. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson, Vice Chair Benson. Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also agree that we're not looking at, you know, the bond language, and I'll agree that, you know, if there's a valid point there, I think that's for another body to make a decision whether that is what the voters consider what a use is, what a community use is, or what a recreational use is. That's not for us to decide that here. And I agree that, you know, that we're here to, you know, talk about what, what zoning does and how, you know, schools are built and charter schools are built. I guess my, I guess my question to staff would be, have we changed zoning before in Burnley County for other charter schools to be built and be successful? Do you have that answer?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, I would back up just a little bit and just remind the folks on the commission that this is not a request for a zone change. It's a realization of an existing zone. But I think that the heart of the question is, has the county approved schools in this manner before?
Yeah.
The answer is unequivocally yes. Many times before, in similar contexts as this. Myself and my predecessors have done this on a number of occasions.
So yeah, let me rephrase that. The zoning is already in place. We are just allowing them to do it through the mechanism that we're changing right now. Okay? And that we've done it many times over.
There are a number of precedents, yes.
Okay. Another, just a quick question, maybe just because I don't know the answer and I was trying to find it. This purchase was purchased for open space initially? No? It was purchased for?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Grady.
Okay. Mr. Grady.
Madam Chair, Barbosa Commissioner Casada, initially, this was purchased with, without, it was not open space, I want to be very clear. That's a separate pot of money.
Okay.
Separate, you know, bond.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure of that.
But this was purchased with Parks and Rec money for parks and recreational uses. And that was the funding that was available at the time that the community was in full support of the county owning this.
So I was just making sure that it wasn't, wasn't open space. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grady. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Hamm. All right. All right, if we don't have any further discussion, we will vote on items 5A and 5B separately. I move. I guess, can I have support in the language? Make sure I get it right. Go ahead.
Madam Chair Barboya, if the commission wishes to support the zoning that would allow the school, you would vote to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Board of Adjustment. And if you wish to grant the appeal to the appellant, that would be the language.
Thank you. I move to uphold the appeal and the decision.
That would be to grant, upholding the appeal would be to deny the school.
Okay.
Denying the appeal would be to support the school. Just to make sure.
To support.
My apologies.
Thank you. No, you said it right, and I can't remember past a minute, obviously. So I move to support the appeal. I'm still got it wrong. Deny the appeal.
I second the motion to deny the appeal.
Aye. Go ahead. Does somebody want to make the motion other than myself?
I make the motion to deny the appeal.
And I believe Commissioner Vascoody is seconding.
Oh, yeah, I'll second.
Great. Okay, any all-in-favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. That passes. Would anyone else like to?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal on item 5B.
I second.
Thank you. Any all-in-favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposition? Great, thank you. Do pass. And I just want to thank for all the people in attendance here tonight. Everyone's voice is more appreciated and heard. I very much want to thank for the interpretation that's been available and language access in our very first chamber meeting. So thank you for this, and good luck on your school.
Madam Chair, if you want to read the next meeting into the record and then adjourn?
Great. So the next meeting will be, the next zoning meeting will be Tuesday, April 12, 2022, at 3:00 PM here in Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. If there's no other business, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.